Oh.
Here.
Again.
Here.
Fine.
Here.
Roman.
Here.
The path.
Here.
Second.
Here.
Right.
Here.
Okay, number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, Your Honor?
No changes, Stephen.
Motion approved.
Okay.
Hold the roll.
Again.
Yeah.
Fine.
Yeah.
Roman.
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A, tonight we have a presentation from K through six Excel students with Boone Community Schools. Turn it over to.
Hi, and good on. I'm Mrs. Mike Google from Boone Middle School, and actually, it's just sixth graders.
Okay.
But that's just my title, K through six. So we've heard about the new our first year sixth graders. And they've been working on community problem solving, which is getting kids to think about issues in their community and ways that they might think about addressing them. So they've got a few projects they'd just like to share their ideas with. So thank you for having us.
So. Can you, uh, please, uh, open it?
Hi, my name is Noel Mehlman.
My name is Lori Shiver.
My name is Ryan Johnson. I'm great with that, and this is our.
Just tell me all your ideas.
Our inspiration, when our group puts that together for the community problem solving, we wanted to find something that helps with it. We wanted to make a fun place with our age to go and have a big time. We would like to turn the Y and T A into a community center. How does your birthday, our town? This is thanks to our town because if it doesn't work to the center, then middle aged kids can have something to do. Some kids don't like to do sports, so we have a kind of center so kids can do all sorts of activities.
Some of the activities will have is basketball, walking on the track, some being in dancing, dodgeball, dodgeball, football, and the library and commons will be open. Kids can also play board games and do crafts.
And for that, we use a, that nature is one of the businesses that help, that's what's going in the school, it's a met, met area to make out for other businesses such as daycare centers, card, yoga, workout. But the racquetball ring to a honey wall, okay? Or have a company, a father sending an effort. Ancient timehouse. It is nine hundred sixteen, I would come. It is seventeen, and I've been here volunteering for service hours, and during their silver phone. On school day, it is open from five p.m. to seven thirty p.m. for kids to come. On weekends, nine hundred sixteen hour from ten a.m. to seven thirty p.m. Spouts usually come about any day of the week, but not at eight. This is what, this is what the Y and T A looks like right now. This is what it looks like after we, after we read the business. There is, have, there's reading, have you? Circle space, check-ins, a little rental space room, Starbucks, honey wall, airboard gaming.
Um, in conclusion, we hope you consider our idea. We have put a lot of thought and effort into that activity center. All of us hope this helps the kids of our town to have a fun place to be, welcome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did not get the, well.
Okay.
I didn't get it, no.
That's a, all right. Roman had a Minecraft, you want to tell Roman? Online world, based around the water plan and their design. But things including, I tried to make it as functional as crop, as top, small, well, making it also just to make it, just to give it more of an image, you want to say.
Very good.
Hey, want to step back and hold that for a second?
One person, Daniel's lawn.
That is my, sorry.
He found the door. What I need to do, ever since COVID, the number of things that we have brought. A lot of businesses have closed. It's not a safe, many activities. Also, a lot of parks and places to play are outdated. For example, the art stadium and the Y and T A. If these things are closed and outdated, kids and people will get lazier and unhealthier.
Our idea, our idea was to take the room, the Y and T A, and then it's more our home. We want to make it nature food. We have, we want to make, we want to have many walls with different types of trees, such as desert, rainforest, ocean, snowy mountains, and volcano. Our wall would be made in plastic, but texture is more of a nature school. We also want to add animals, so one of the places to have to be an animal school. We also wanted to have different levels of.
We should charge a cheap amount of money so people not have to worry about paying a lot of money. So maybe two dollars per kid, five dollars per adult. The business can pay us for the idea. This would be like buying a patent. Once, once they pay us for the idea, they can do what they want and want to, they stick with our requirements. Also, they would need to cover building costs and insurance and safety measures.
Desert, so the desert thing will be very rocky and sandy. Then you could grow out of your path or maybe practices.
Ocean, where the ocean section where you put these sprinklers to make a water, and make a climate park. And stuff, and it would be hard.
Rainforests, this level would have branches to grab on, and it would be like climbing through trees with rainforest cameras. They have lots of shrubbery and.
Snow and mountains. This could be like takes on bronze, snow, but the mountains would be the hardest ones. Okay, the volcano escape, we could use both man props and also like my idea to interact with them. Which would be on a canvas, when it goes off, the wall would shake like people.
Conclusion. Think you should accept our idea, it will make people more active and also be excited for something new. We hope you like our idea and reservation.
Very good job. That's a very good.
We're wrapping up in the next few minutes, and I tell you, even though the roads are closed, even though they may be blocked, it will continue this rallying into the street.
Sidewalks are now what, we need more sidewalks in Bloom. Against, like, okay.
Do you know why?
Parkways that store the car.
Sidewalks, either you care about them or you don't. We need new ones in Bloom. Not only that, but maybe we need to refer to shoulder lines. School, many schools have schools walking them. Many street trams will have many sidewalks more than at all. This means that more people are walking in the street and reckless driving is not injury or any less. How much would it cost? The cost isn't, isn't that big. It costs a nine dollars for a square foot sidewalk. It costs about the same amount for a pair, one square foot of sidewalk. Winter, in the winter, sidewalks are much more needed because the roads are icy. Snow-covered places, and some people still have to walk, and it's quite slower work. Building more sidewalks would help in these times.
And great, we're doing, we need more sidewalks because there are a lot of areas where there are schools with no sidewalks. And there are a lot of low kids in that area. This is why we need more sidewalks in there. Thanks for your time. Thank you. Voice gets involved here in Iowa by Lily Road and Bill Anderson. In our community, in our, in Boone Iowa, we need more interaction. We need to get involved, doing things for people in our community. Helping our community is not that hard. The things we do to help people every day. We need to help more in order to do better. Doing good is easy, for example, helping people study or even just phone. There are also some problems with volunteering. Some kids might not be old enough to volunteer, or they might not be able to do as many things as others. They do not quite belong to you, but if people don't like to volunteer, they might not have as much fun. If some people want it and tell other people, our community would be seen as bad, and we could help other communities become better too. To me, yes. Some people don't want to volunteer, and that's okay. It might be easier to spread the word by telling people about how to change the law. Volunteering doesn't cost you money, it doesn't even have to be time-worn from your day. It can be something as simple as holding the door open for the person behind. Boone City Valley Road, the Boone City Valley Road is local rail, railroad here in Boone, Iowa. There are volunteering opportunities set through the Senate Express, where there's a train ride that appears every two holidays, and it's promised the train ride, which is very exciting. If Iowa be a. New community volunteering also knows people at Iowa people is about helping the community get clean. New community volunteering helps take care of the safe fare and other smaller fairs in Iowa. They help clean up after animals kicking up litter and marge. New community volunteering is not the key to keep, to help keep Iowa clean and beautiful. Library, Boone's Air Center, the library is the only library in there. The volunteering on Wednesday and Thursday, you can come to the library for short time, and they let older kids volunteer to do other things. They also let kids restock the bookshelves. They need, there is a porridge called the Green Smothers. They have activities that help the community in some way. Near Christmas time, they're going to give their hospital, our major home, and send Christmas candles in the summer. There are activities with stairs, which are scanning animals, showing, etc. There are also things that they do to help the community, such as cleaning up a graveyard overall, for it to keep the community positive and anyways. Why it says, why it says it's an organization that helps kids and families in need. You can volunteer to be a mentor and help maybe kids study. Why it says it's helped over three hundred one kids get a mentor in twenty twenty one. Iowa Violet, Iowa Violet Center helps law, 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 and community here. Volunteering community has been so strong in its skills to care for those who are living lives. People can support, get, do, run, speak, fair, and education. Green Area Community Society, the Green Area Community Society volunteers help and care for many animals that are lost, homeless, or abandoned. All the volunteers must be eighteen or older if they want to volunteer regularly. And the Green Area Community Society trains the volunteers so they know how to care for the animals that they. Eastern song, Eastern song has a nice and cool hand, they imagine things all different. Eastern song has things like music, dance, arts, crafts, poetry, humor, and just spending time with the women. Eastern song has an application to volunteer, and you can fill out without even going to imagine. And these are the ones that we want from all of the.
Oh, very good job. Thank you. Yeah, you're welcome. If you have any questions for any of us who are willing to take questions, like, you have any? Yes.
I didn't get to share the video because I didn't have it, and I turned on my hotspot. So I wondered if you guys could check again for it.
Jack, right now. Well, he's looking, yeah, it's fantastic. We, it's kids like you that we need, this community. I, I know it's probably nervous coming up in front of us, but everyone of you did a great job, so thank you.
Yep, that's the video. So that was the entrance with the reception. Start your computer there and stuff.
That's awesome.
That's the door right there. Then you can come in here. I have these one or seventeen stair shots with automatic doors. There's a light part. And then I carved it up, so the place you can sit. If you want, here, there's a pool. There would be a dinosaur on the pool, but that wasn't the last one that got busted.
There a zombie in the pool?
Those are, that's a, that's a place for like treadmills. Uh, there would be more, and it would be bigger, but, uh, the old one was bigger. There's a, lots of traffic there. Maybe I was just running around it, so. And here are some weightlifting things, and like I said in last month, there would be more, it would be bigger, and stuff.
Yeah, pictures, we'll start pictures.
And here would be like, it had a socialization area last time, I'd be like, there. A road, you just don't, you want people to go on there and watch, I don't know, TV. Or if it's really anything. It's not worth it, I was just sitting here for a little bit. Having TVs, and there's kind of a gifter. Get down here, maybe, this is the office area, where the table, bunch of desks, stuff where you can do the crafts, read books, whatever. Then there's, there's also sofa right there, where you can watch that side of the basketball game from in there. If the features are taken up. And there are the bathrooms. And bathroom. That's the mirror, is it, how mirror mods, yeah. I'll get in the bathroom. Here. And there would be the flying room, that it kind of function, I guess. That's the racquetball court, just because I have my favorite game back at the old one. With tinted glass, so watch that side of the basketball court. There's the basketball court. I actually think that might be quite functional. And there are the features that you can watch the basketball being on. That's the best I can do with Minecraft. There'd be like the usual features. And here, the storage. And pretty much, I don't know what you had me rather put in there, I thought it was a science, this is for. The whole wall, the coffee, there's no, I just pointed out for a superboard. And then there's Matt made by Roman Johnson, which is me.
All right. Very good.
We have a couple of tiny city halls, so she's just gonna wrap it up with a few things.
Um, I think the activity is really, um, to help elevation of kids who can't, like, not have things to do, understand, so I feel to help them, uh, like, if you need, it's, it's the goal. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, B twenty eight sixty four resolution. Wanted the U of D Bank for West Boone, Iowa to serve as pay, main agent, note registrar, and transfer agent, approving the main agent and note registrar, and transfer agent agreement, and operating execution of the area. Second, hold the roll.
Fine.
Yes.
Roman.
Yes.
Pipa.
Yes.
Second.
Yes, right.
Yeah.
Bert.
Yeah.
Again.
Yes.
Okay, C twenty eight sixty five, resolution approving and authorizing a formal loan agreement and authorizing providing for issuance of sewer revenue capital loan notes and providing for a method of payment of the notes with approval of the tax exemption certificate and continuing disclosure certificate. So move. Call the roll.
Roman.
Yes.
Pipa.
Yes.
Second.
Yes, right.
Yeah.
Bert.
Yeah.
Again.
Yes.
Fine.
Yes.
Okay, D, public carrying to the sale of property, which is listed below. Um, is there any written comments? Any public comments? Not in this public hearing, it's closed. Let's see, D, public hearing on the proposed plans to establish a formal contract and estimate the cost from two thousand twenty one water treatment plant removal of Liam Residuals project. Written comments, any public comments? Not this public hearing, it's closed. Uh, number four, report to standing committee, policy administration DJ.
Uh, yes, we have one item, uh, tonight, uh, regarding officially your two thousand twenty two health insurance renewal. And I'll turn it over to Bill.
Thank you, sir. So if you remember, while back, we, uh, staff asked for some help from the policy administration committee to consider, uh, health insurance renewals this year twenty two. Uh, some of the numbers that came in were extremely high. Uh, they started up around sixteen, and with some adjustments down, and ended up finally at ten point seven. Uh, that was approximately a hundred and sixty two thousand dollars, but that money was budgeted for fiscal year twenty two. So staff and the committee reviewed other alternatives presented by IPEP. As you know, IPEP is the organization we belong to for our health insurance. Uh, an alternative plan that was reviewed by, uh, the committee and staff was an alternative plan called IPEP dash B X S E. What that plan is, is, uh, it's a reduction in premium of about not quite three percent, savings of about forty thousand dollars. Uh, if the city would choose to go with that. Uh, it's the same in, in network benefits to union and non-union employees, except there's a seventy five dollar copay for urgent care. Uh, I guess to explain a little bit, urgent care appears to be used a lot more than in the past, so now they're separating that out. So with this plan, there's a copay, uh, in our contracts and with other employees, we have copays of ten percent. Uh, in addition, this plan, the deductible increases, uh, to five thousand dollars for a single plan and ten thousand for a family. But as you know, the city buys down, or better word, we self-insures. Those deductibles, where they're down to five hundred and a thousand. Uh, so we would look at buying those down, just like we normally do. There'd be no change from the employee, other than the, uh, seventy five dollar copay, which would be, the sixty five dollar difference would be reimbursed. So we looked at some scenarios. Uh, for example, last year, there was eleven hundred and seventy two, I think, office visits in the city voted for the church plant. So we just took half of those, uh, five hundred and seventy six. And worst case scenario, looked at what, we had that many, I don't think there's a chance that that's gonna happen, but we just looked at it that way. That would cost the city about thirty seven thousand four hundred dollars to reimburse those, those copays of the difference between the seventy five and the ten. Any difference, or in addition to that, the city self-insures, there's a self-insure in the policy itself for twenty percent of employees, if we, if we had a bad year, uh, that would cost a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. That is actually in the insurance plan, it's part of the premiums. So if we took it one step further, say, twenty one employees are thirty percent. Uh, ended up using the max deductible, that costs an additional fifty six thousand above the premium, because we, we already have a hundred and twelve that we're already paying for that's in the premium. So looking at some of the costs, if we looked at fifty percent, uh, urgent care visits of the, of that eleven seventy two, it's thirty seven forty, and if we looked at the twenty one employees, which would be maxed in out of pocket, uh, and that's a bad year. Uh, it'd be fifty six thousand, for a total cost of ninety two thousand four hundred and forty that we're self-insuring, that would come out of city coffers. If you looked at the fifty percent office visits for the urgent care, the same amount, thirty seven forty four, but twenty pers, if we projected twenty percent of fourteen employees that they maxed out their deductible, uh, the additional would be thirty seven thousand four forty, because remember, we're already paying premiums for, uh, the twenty percent, which is the hundred and twelve. Now, the good news is, on, uh, that plan, it saves the city forty thousand and some odd dollars in reduced premiums from what we're previously paying. In addition, we're not paying in the hundred and sixty two thousand that we budgeted for that ten percent, ten point seven percent increase. So there's potential savings of, of money there of two hundred and two thousand one forty six, which far outweighs what we, what we perceive as, uh, worst case scenarios that could happen on what it would cost us. In addition, the city has a total of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, basically on account with IPEP. And that's where that money comes from initially, so say we had a bad years on that self-insurance, and it goes over that twenty percent that I talked about. That money would come from the two sixty, so we're not even to the two hundred and two thousand dollars in savings yet. So after, uh, a lot of discussion with staff and the committee, crack me from wrong, council began, the P and A committee uh, made a motion to recommend counsel to go to the IPEP B X S E plan. And staff feels that, that, uh, we have reasonably managed the risk of this plan, and, and we think that we'll be okay. There's no guarantees, obviously, but I also mentioned that staff will be looking at this plan every month to see where we're at, so that we can monitor and see if we see any concerns. Uh, Andre, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, you can have it.
Okay. Uh, I'll answer the questions you have. Uh, if not, uh, a motion to, uh, for counsel to go with the IPEP dash B X S E. And I'll just add, if I could, that we will have open enrollment for employees, and we will make it mandatory for them this year to do it, because we need to explain the, the urgent care part of this, as, as well as the city is taking, is taking on the risk of this. We believe it's managed risk, but the city is taking the risk.
And then there's an out of state change to, out of that working.
Yes.
Compared to the other. Right.
They have, please.
Yeah. Over this, we're good, we're covering that, right? Okay, great. I'll make that. Second, hold the roll.
Pipa.
Yes.
Second.
Yes, right.
Yeah.
Bert.
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
Fine.
Yes.
Roman.
Yes.
Next up, I'll save the Stephen.
I will, seems to me we might have one thing, I'll double check, Stephen.
We do have a meeting on the twenty eighth, four thirty, about two o'clock.
Okay, and also, if you do have a meeting, I will not be here, I will be gone that week, the last week in April. Uh, Chief Lebo will handle the public safety meeting.
Okay. Good. Uh, tell me, Stephen, the work pool. Uh, your honor, both, and Greg.
Uh, yes, Your Honor, a couple of things. One, uh, there's a resolution, two resolutions supporting our twenty second and Lynch Street housing development L O I application with the state. Um, it's the same agreement, only two different sections. So the details have been tweaked and finalized, and ED passed it, both of them earlier tonight. All, but we do have to do it separately in part of the, the application process. Bill, did I get it right?
You did.
Okay.
Just one, if I could, I'll just add that at the May third council meeting, there'll be real estate purchase options for the. the real estate purchase options for the property up there for you to consider, and we'll have the resolution along with that. Jim has handled those, put those together, and he could answer, could answer any questions you have that night, but they will be coming on the May third. Application deadline for this is, Brian, what is it, May?
I think it's May twelve.
May twelve. Brian Fritz is with us tonight. He's the developer of the project. He was also the developer of project Alice Place out there on the south end. The resolution speak for themselves. And so if this project is passed and we hope to know, if we proceed forward this, we hope to know sometime around Labor Day about this, then obviously, if that's the case, then a more detailed development agreement will be put together between the developer and the city for your consideration, goes along with the public hearing and things like that. In addition, I asked the Ames E V C to put together a economic impact analysis for us on this project. That is our new desk. This right here, this will, will show you, if you look at the project impacts and assumptions, that's fourteen and, fourteen and a half million dollar project. The family one is about eight point seven, the elderly is about five point eight. It'll give you the positives next to the center of the project on that sheet. Very informational, Ames E V C did a very good job on this. If you have any questions about that, I'll certainly turn and answer those questions. Other than that, councilman pick up, I think that's all I hear.
Okay. Neither one of these is in the consent agenda, so we, you need to vote on.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve twenty eight sixty two resolution supporting proposed agreement between the city, Boone and President of the National Superior House.
Second, call the roll.
Second? Yes, right?
Yeah.
First?
Yeah.
Again?
Yes.
Fine?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Yes. I make a vote to approve twenty eight sixty three resolution support proposed terms for housing agreement on the family subdivision.
Right?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Fine?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Kipha?
Yes.
Second? Yes.
And then the last item, arts council policies and final request, we had ED discussion on the arts council, council members Stecker and Councilman Furbur there along with some members of the arts commission. I think we have one left in the audience. All we did was finalize the agreement and propose guidelines and application process which we're coming to full council on May third.
Okay, Your Honor. Thank you. And we've got, for still being special, let me.
Thank you, Your Honor. On the agenda, we have a site plan from Mike Clark. Mike purchased the old American concrete site where the plant was at over on eight twenty seven Minota. American concrete, building down, pretty much cleaned the site up. Mike went back in and did a little better job of cleaning it, leveling the ground out. He's going to put up a storage unit. It's thirty six by one eighty. It's very similar to the one on Eighth Street where Training Four Warriors is, that was Mike building. This is going to be real similar to that. It's going to fence the entire area. That's a big area, so it's going to be a lot of fence he's going to put up to keep it clean and keep it nice looking. The property is owned industrial, so there was no brick facing requirement, and staff had determined that there will be no storm warning intention requirement at this time. He may add more buildings in the future, and that may fit that in, but right now, he's good on storm warning intention. He has the recommended approval and staff as well.
What's he going to use it for?
Just like those units over there on Eighth Street, the ones like the training, you can do the same thing, there'll be individual units. So that's the renter's lease amount. Yeah. Yeah.
Will there be any grass there? Grass trees?
It's, it's the front of the building, well, with the, the driveways where they're at, they're going to be paved this time as opposed to Eighth Street. They'll be right close to the curb, zero property line, you can build right up to the property line. There will be some in the back, besides we'll have a little bit of mostly in the back. Yeah. And I would assume he would give some of that for his business enterprise electric, free equipment, whatever, but again, it'll be inside of the fenced area.
Need motion on that?
Yeah.
Motion to approve. Call the roll.
First?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Fine?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Kipha?
Yes.
Second? Yes, right?
Okay, next up, finance officer Andrea. City attorney Jim, no report. Director of public works, John Ross.
No report.
City engineer Dan Scott. He's in Orange, one day.
The one plant, closing project is complete and it's working well, so.
Call the roll.
Again?
Yes.
Fine?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Kipha?
Yes.
Second? Yes, right?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Next up, I'll save the chief out.
Yes, Your Honor, just one quick item. The Iowa alcohol beverage division changed their software system. When they did that, it made it a little more confusing to applicants with that. We have an application tonight from the Boone County Fairgrounds, which is for the Sleeping Angels Foundation. It's a change in premises so they could have a five day license, but I felt it was easier to get the proper stuff done and bring it tonight than, than have it in the resolution. So I would need a motion for approval of their premises change and five day license.
Motion to approve. Call the roll.
Fine?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Kipha?
Yes.
Second? Yes, right?
Yes.
First?
Yeah.
Again?
Yes.
That's it, thank you.
Chief Weevil?
Yes, John, we have a possible pending retirement, my department. So with that, the civil service, I met with some candidates for testing interviews and they came forth with four names that they felt should be on the process. So we, I asked the council who certified this list.
Second, call the roll.
Yes.
Kipha?
Yes.
Second? Yes, right?
Yes.
First?
Yeah.
Again?
Yes.
Fine?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, city manager Bill.
Thank you, sir. I have a few items. First one is the golf course, they have, I had a conversation with Pat Clements. They have about a hundred and sixty trees that they disposed of, some in relationship with great chunks of that are dead. As you know, open burning is happening now and they're working on it, but with the hundred and sixty trees, I don't think there's any way they can finish doing the burning by May fifteenth. What they're going to be burning is branches. They're going to haul away all the, the trunks and everything like that, but they don't have any place to take the branches. So they're going to like to burn these on their property. If you look, if you know where the driving range is out there, it's just itself of it. There's nothing really around it. So what we're doing is anticipating that with that amount of trees, all those branches are not going to be, they're not going to have them all burned by May fifteenth. So I discussed with him the possibility and had a talk with the chief Adams about issuing the may burn permit after May fifteenth for thirty days to complete the burning of just, again, just the branches. One of the reasons why I think we need the other thirty days on our permit from eight fifteen to May fifteen, you have to stop at seven o'clock at night and the fire has to be out, so that cuts him short on trying to get it done. So I'm probably going to ask Justin to issue a burn permit for thirty days after the burn period so that he can complete that project out of the airport unless Justin has the authority to do that, but we always like to run it by the elected officials. So I'm planning on doing that with somebody of Jets. And I'll complete that project. It'll be the same requirements, I'm assuming, on burn done at seven P M each day, and so it's not burning into.
And that's one of the discussions that we had about the length of going over the thirty days extra so they can burn in smaller piles so that it's completely out, it doesn't cause an issue throughout the town, but it will take longer to make that happen.
I do not, he has the authority to do it. I just want to let you where that I'm going to ask him to do that so that the golf course can complete that project.
How many trees was that again?
He told me a hundred and sixty. And again, it's just the branches. All right, thank you. My next item is discussing the rules and fees from the community center. You, if you notice that I had a lot of papers tonight, and if you work on your desk, the rules for the green space. Justin was putting together for us. Councilman Mormon, Councilman Juplaz, and Councilman Stecker met with staff on this. And so we, after that meeting, we kind of compiled this. These are for your review, and if you approve of these or you want to add some, that's what we're looking for tonight. And what we're planning on doing is bringing a resolution forward at the May third council meeting to finally, to approve the rules for the green space and as well for the fees that you will charge. And Justin, and the fees are on the bottom, rental cost. So Justin was very, so like you said, put all this on one sheet, plus the second sheet is the application that he put together for this, if there's any changes or anything you like. And the way I think we have this set up, if it's an event, it does not involve alcohol. We talked about staff being able to make that approval. If it involves alcohol, they'll need a license, and that will come to the, to the council for approval. We also discussed, we looked at some fence that Justin found online. It's, it's a four foot fence, about eight foot long, I think.
Eight and a half, yep.
It has its own feet. So we looked at the price of that for, we need like fifty two of them in order to, what we're assuming or projecting is when people want alcohol, they're going to want to use Eighth Street from story to the alley. We're going to need that many feet to, to put on a barrier all the way around. So we are looking at purchasing that and then renting that so that we can get our money back on that fence. And I don't think, is that on here, Justin?
No.
So we talked about three hundred bucks per event, I think, for the fence so that we're going to use, it's not budgeted money, so we're going to use Chief Weevil's trust account, if he has money in there for it to pay for that. And another reason for using that account is that when we charge those rentals, that money can go back into his trust account to be reimbursed for the fence.
It's about four, it's about four thousand dollars to, to purchase that fence.
So Terry or Greg or Holly, if you guys, anything else that you want to say? We're, staff is really looking for what the elected officials want for the rules of the green space on this sheet, and if you approve this application. And if you do, if this is what you want in this application, then we'll come forward with a resolution at the May third for approval of this. So if you don't mind, I'll turn it over to elected officials, and you tell staff what you want us to take out, add, what have you.
No, I, I think it's pretty comprehensive. I think it's right where it needs to be. The only thing that I think we talked about taking out the damage deposit, didn't you, JR?
Yeah, it's sort of a.
Yeah, we thought that'd be more hassle than it's worth. Also, we have decided on a name, the committee decided on a name, and council member Stecker came up with Aton Story Green Space. See, I'm putting, I'm throwing it under the bus here. So Aton Story Green Space, I think she did that so nobody would ask exactly where it is.
And separate from county or room, city is implied.
Oh, right. So Aton Story Green Space, if that's okay with council, we want to go ahead and get that signed underway, right? Holly's going to work with our steel guy and design it and get it hopefully up there before kickoff. Second thing is Kaiwo. We want to put a Kaiwo up there permanently. We have enough money in our account to do that pretty easily. Huh?
Sealed.
Yeah, for May, June, July, and August. It's up to the events. Now, if there's an event up there, we're probably going to have to add one or two, depending on the event, but that would be the responsibility of the people holding that event, unless it's a city sponsored event. But we have the money to do that, and then the rental fees and stuff would go back into the account to supplement that year after year. And I, what was it, rental, JR?
Hundred and sixty bucks for the eighty eight handicap test form.
Per month, right?
Yeah, and that's a one service per week.
So it's six hundred bucks. We, like I said, we have money in the account, so initially, we can put that bill, doesn't cost the city anything, and then from that point forward, we'll use the rental fees to pay for that.
How about, that was approached by, are you getting anything for nonprofits?
We talked about that, didn't we?
I told you. Well, I have, I think he's a pastor and they do like the church service and feed people breakfast, the, or a sign.
Well, the only thing you're surprised, Your Honor, was the fact that if we open that up to nonprofits, we may not have enough weekends to rent.
Yeah, I guess.
Because we designed this, all revenue goes back into the fund to sustain the green space, and as of today, there's already annuals of damage.
Yeah.
So we are just getting ahead of the curve when it comes to it.
There's some paint on the venture up there.
Yeah. People sticking signs to the benches that damage the paint job as well, so.
So I, I mean, we'd be willing to consider if you have a viable option for a nonprofit. I, I don't have a problem with that, but you may have to limit that to so many.
Right.
Days out of the season or.
I get it.
Another point there is that, you know, you could show up at any point and use it, you just can't reserve it. You know, possibly without a deposit. You know?
Yeah.
Different monstrosity we're interested in show up.
As long as it's not. Yeah, yeah.
Did JR's talk about what they do at the parks for nonprofits? Wasn't that some discussion?
What do you do, JR? Split the cost a little?
They do fifty percent.
Only pay half. I don't have a problem with that.
But it's got to be scheduled. I, I think it's got to be scheduled, because if you don't, you know, family show up, we're having a family reunion there. The next thing you know, you got, they're all like fighting on, hey, we were here first. And I think it's.
It absolutely has to be scheduled, but if we want to reduce to fifty percent, I don't have a problem with that, but I think we need to limit the, the number during that season.
Yeah.
I don't know.
And I don't know if it's going to be that.
What do you think? I.
I think we had the discussion during the green space side of it, that if we, if we start giving nonprofits and we just start locking down weekends, I mean, there's only so many in a year, and we're already talking first Thursdays of the month for the prior summer for the kickoff, farmer's market, and then if we start.
Car show.
Fourth of July, downtown, June. And then we start going down the slope of, well, we got two weekends a year where we can rent it out to, so if we do do it, it has to be standard for everyone, and we got to stick to it.
Yep. If we, if you do get a nonprofit asking, maybe point them towards the park from the pavilion, something like that, since we already have sort of a policy there. And then if that's full, then maybe revisit it. Because parking, they have church service, I'm parking to, I mean, if you, it's not very big, though you sort of set up or something like.
And our fees are comparable to the ones that partners charge you too. And Joey's going to take care of the scheduling and reservation and stuff.
And, and we did discuss too, we are fully where we're going to keep this. This is just the start. If we go a year or two and decide that it's not working, we're fully where they're going to come back around and look at it.
Yep. I think you go with what you've got here for now and see how it works.
Yeah, with the exception, I take out the damage deposit.
Yep, I got that out.
I think, I think it's good.
I think it's mandatory, it's something, whatever it is, it's got to be scheduled, then you can read through whatever.
And we have on here that seventy two hours is the minimum that you have to schedule it and fill out the application for rental.
So most staff has time to look at.
Right.
And, you know, our goal is to make sure that space is being used a lot. Councilmen Stepper and the, and the art commission have put together a program that will tick that off, I think, and get it started and make people aware of what's going on. and make people aware of what's going on. And the kickoff event, just so everybody knows, will be the first Thursday in June. And uh, we have some plans we'll share with you soon, we can finalize what's going on. Well, the ribbon cutting. So let's just say that.
But it'll be able to be rented before then?
Ye- yes, right, from May?
Yes.
For in May, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure that you didn't want.
This will actually then be final approved by elected officials at the May third council, right?
Okay. Yes, sir. So after the third, we can start, when do you want to start taking this thing?
The second is
So once this is approved, we can start taking, pad up the third on the fourth. Okay. Well, it won't be approved until the third, then they have to have seventy-two hours to get approval, correct?
You can start that first weekend.
You can start taking requests. Okay. Just wanna make sure, like, the feeling of it setting off.
Um, do you wanna change it?
Well, it should, it should, because that's the only Okay.
You want twenty-four hour business hours then?
Seventy-two business hours. Don't worry, they put an application on Friday to Monday. Okay, great. This could be, so it'll be seventy with the seventy-two business hours. Maybe this is good.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Three business, three business, probably.
Three business.
Yeah, three business.
Yeah, three business. Okay. Okay, are we good on that? Any questions or anything? Off of my last item. As well on your desk, you have uh, you can talk about the road with the school. Councilman Mormon handed this out right here to you all. And then also I put on your desk the proposal. Uh, I will share with you that uh, the Public Safety Committee, Steve, thinking, thinking. The Public Safety Committee uh, met with the school on April fourteenth. It was at their request because there had been some uh, possible changes they were talking about on the road. As you know, we talked initially the southern road and then went uh, north road. Uh, Jer and Janir heard that the north road had found some potential problems or issues. Uh, as our engineer says, a road can be built anywhere, it just comes down to the tasks and the money. So they, they made a pitch to us, pitch probably isn't a fair word, but we listened to their engineer and after that, uh, we listened to what we thought they were talking about or wanted. Uh, we took a break and the Public Safety Committee met here in the council chamber real quick to discuss uh, with staff. And ultimately, as a result of that discussion, uh, the Public Safety Committee made a motion to offer the school up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a completed road from Hancock on that southern route to Air Court Road. In addition, which they, the school had asked previously, agreed to waive permits and inspection fees, which I get from it to be around forty-five thousand dollars. And then there's some talk about where the sewer goes and I know staff initially wanted, thought the sewer needed to come from Crestwood, but uh, we don't feel, and you can change our minds if you want, that there'll ever be any development south of there. So it's not necessary for that, those who choose to come from Crestwood, they could go to Hancock. Whether, they're discussing whether or not they'll take a lift station or not by the school, but so that kind of gives you what we talked about, uh, so not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand. We have since learned uh, that there is a party that is against the road being, that south road of being built. And that party met with the school last Friday. I was asked to be a part of that meeting. Uh, so I went and attended, I never did offer anything because it's, it's, it's not really between the city. Unless you all tell me different, the city's not involved in that, uh, as far as the land purchase of the land, et cetera. Uh, to add to this, I took a phone call today from Eric from uh, DLR, he's their architect. In the meeting on the fourteenth, he indicated that the cost of the road from Hancock to, the southern road from Hancock to Air Court Road would be about one point four million. Uh, in the discussion we had in public safety meeting, uh, Councilman Mormon suggested that we add a hundred thousand to that to one point five. That's where we get fifty percent and uh, that, that amount was discussed in the meeting that possibly that's what they would ask for us for the city to pay fifty percent of that fee. However, in my phone call today with Eric and DLR, he indicated that there was a statement made in that meeting and uh, by DLR and that the cost of that road possibly could be at least half times that more, which would take it to two point two five million dollars, which obviously changes the fifty percent if, if council so, excuse me, so chooses. And in that email, and I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, I know you do, I believe it said, he requested council not to take any action tonight. Uh, you can uh, give that as due consideration however you choose. Um, so that's where we are. Councilman Mormon, is there anything you wanna add or Councilman Ray? Anything I've left out or say? Given, given the constant changing information that we get, um, we made it perfectly clear to them prior to them purchasing this land, i- if they had done surveys and, and due diligence when it came to this property. And they assured us that they had. That is not the case. And not going into any detail on that. Um, that seven, seven, or seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar offer that we made them was fair and equitable. They were all about it when we made it. And the circumstances that followed that meeting have changed their mind. And I know that that's driving the cost of this road. I'm confident that that's what's going on. And we were not involved from a city standpoint in the purchase of this land or the location of this land or the cost of this land, nothing. We had nothing to do with it. And now they're asking us to front some of this cost involved with that property that we don't necessarily need to do. So personally, from my standpoint, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar cap not to exceed should stand. And I would like to see that motion happen tonight. Because if we don't do that tonight, I think that it sends a clear message to them that we would be willing to renegotiate this thing and uh, who knows what the next cost price
Let me get this right, so the landowner, the landowners that sold the land in the school are now trying to dictate where the road goes. Which that should have been worked out.
I
We have nothing to do with that.
We have nothing to do with that.
So that changes the numbers, obviously, if that's
That's my, that's my feeling, because if we go to the north, um, what we didn't know prior to this meeting, if you look at that map that I handed out, there's a little dotted line up at, at the northern edge of that road, that is a flood plain.
Okay.
And if we cut through that, the Corps of Engineers will be involved, the DNR will be involved. And if the Corps of Engineers get involved, it could be two years. By the time they do the studies, by the time everything happens, it could be at least that long.
Not to mention it requires a bridge.
It requires a bridge. And when the engineer said that, she said, her words were, I've only been on board for a week. That means they didn't engage their civil engineer in this process until a week ago.
Uh, that's not our problem.
No. So with that said, when they move it and they start talking about bridge, and this is a big bridge, if you look at that flood plain, this bridge is probably two or three hundred feet wide going across that, that center, that flood. It's a million dollars. Okay?
We were pitched the idea you want.
Right.
And told that reason we had to go south.
Right.
Which would have evaporated all our ideas of, in community development that we were hoping on the north side. Really wasn't much of a change to the city at all for them to go south. Yeah, you were pitched, just as you said, that the going to the north would require a bridge. Um, and with that information that we have now, uh, that option, even if they wanted to say, well, we'll abandon south, we'll go north, it's gonna cost us even more than what they're saying now. The bottom line is here, the question for us now is, have we acted in good faith all the way through this process? And I believe that we have, one hundred percent. And by our decision the other day to give the three quarters of a million dollars up to that towards this south end road project, because that's what they felt was the way they needed to go. Um, I think it just ends it right there for us. We've done everything we could to go.
They shot us one point one to one point four.
Right, and we went high end.
Yeah, we did.
They said one point one to one point four, we went to one point five because I know how this works. Right?
Yeah.
And I wanted to be fair with them. And so that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar offer was more than fair offer, or more than fixed.
Yeah, I'm with you. I think we stick to our go ahead and walk.
No, no, let's try to adjust. So I, I'm just saying that we, we, like, uh, Councilman Ray said, we did it in good faith. We've been, we've been acting in good faith this entire time. We've been blindsided a couple of times on this process. We didn't know anything about the covenant with the drainage system. We didn't know anything about the, the flood plain that they had to have known about when they bought this property. That's something that has to be declared in, in that. So I, I think that the city, that was a fair, equitable offer and we should stick to it. So
Yeah, and I think if we don't stick with that, we don't know where it's gonna go from there when
That's exactly right.
This has been committed to, it seems like, um, in your, in your committee meeting, was it the committee meeting?
Okay. So we, we don't know. The, the problem was I held that, I held their feet to the fire on their original quote, three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for eleven hundred feet of road. That's what they told us. Our city engineer, the engineer that said that that toll, that road cost was gonna be three million dollars. Well, guess what? They basically said that he was out of his mind, that wasn't gonna be anywhere close to that. Now we're at three million dollars.
Not that we should take it in personal.
No.
But, you know, we do, we do hire people that give us the information they're looking for.
Right.
We should respect that. And I didn't kind of like the dismissiveness that we had on that.
Yeah, I I just don't understand how we went with, at that meeting, I said to people, so your three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar number right, given all the new information? Well, no, it'll probably be five hundred thousand. Okay, I get that. Sometimes things change. So that's why we upped that. I, I am asked to up that off. So I, I, I would, yeah, I would make a motion that we stick to the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar cap as described. That's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a complete road from the connection at uh, Hancock to Corporal Sneddon Drive, including all the infrastructure, everything that's complete and we're out of them.
And when we all, when, when we we won't pay that, don't
No, there would be a twenty-eighty agreement that most likely either the school attorney or Jim would put together to specify all the, the items that need to be in there in particular. We don't know how we're gonna fund this yet. Obviously, uh, we will start looking at that on how we'll fund it. Uh, generally, seven hundred and fifty thousand go to bond on that, that's not a lot of money to do a bond, so we'll look, Andre and I will look at some other ways. If you bond, then I'm sure there's gonna be some restrictions as far as how the money can be spent. As opposed if we choose something else, then there may not be those restrictions. But they'll have to account for it, give us proof of it, all that, all those items, Stephen.
So just so that I'm sure I'm understanding this offer, the offer is seven hundred and fifty thousand and are obligated to this original location.
They can, they can put it wherever they want, wherever they want, whatever they want to.
Should we, should we amend, should we just change this to direct staff to create the twenty-eighty agreement subject to these parameters?
That'd probably be a good idea.
Listen, I, I would just point out from an economic development perspective, I would not put any numbers down period at this point. Other than letting them know that we are firm at the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the reason I say that is, is that we have several ED projects that come up that might even make that impossible. At seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm talking housing, I'm talking wellness center, I'm talking, we've got a lot of things going on in the world right now. If we pledge that money, we're gonna have to come up with that money. It's not our job to get the school district to figure out what they're gonna do. If we just say, listen, we're at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, come to us and you get this figured out, that's on them. But we're not committed and we don't have to come up with that money last minute or, or something else, it's on our timeframe. And we've got other projects. We got Westport and Marion, we got the Wellness Center, we got Housing Development. We got potential, three other things off the top of my head too, that we're still working on. All of it needed our attention and staff time other than this project, because the school district could just come back and change it again.
What you're saying
Let them know that that's
What you're saying is we don't commit to the seven hundred and fifty thousand?
You've already committed that we are up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's where we are. Next move is on them. And we focus staff time and, and we just say, come back to us when you figure this out, we'll do our best to help you out.
So yeah, just wait on the twenty-eighty until they're ready to have more, more solid
Right, yeah.
Okay. I think if you can just hold off on that and let them know where you're at and see what happens.
By you saying that, that tells me, as you said yesterday, that I'm gonna approach the school and I'm gonna tell them that the city is basic, without doing the official, that the city's in for seven hundred, up to, up to seven hundred and fifty thousand for the road.
And it's not that I'm against the number, it's just that I know how limited our staff is and the time we have. And we got a lot more projects that need the attention than a twenty-eighty agreement that could sit for six months.
Well, I, I think just your motion sets the, sets the tone.
I like your motion, but it tells us that, like I said, it's where we're at, we can see that. And we're not committed to it.
Alright.
You've offered it, but we have not accepted it, you have no agreements.
Well, that offer was pending council.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yes, so now it is on the school district and the school board that you come back to us with their final numbers to tell us what is going on. No more staff time, no more city time. We focus on the things that we need to for the community that honestly have been delayed because we've been waiting for them to come back to us.
Okay, but so, just so we're clear, council, the committee have recommended up to seven hundred and fifty thousand. I know we don't wanna create a document yet, but we still need to
Can we just reiterate that?
We still need to affirm, the council needs to affirm with the motion that that's what we have up to and then leave staff to just move forward and roll the discussion.
We'll deal with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I could, just the only question is, are you, you just talked about what, what Councilmore said, up to seven hundred and fifty thousand for the school road, not specifically for location. Right, I just Just right now. Are committed to the school road. Thank you.
Full roll.
The clock?
Yes.
Second? Yes, right, first?
Yeah.
Again?
Yes.
Sign?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
And just a quick side piece on what Councilmember Warren said. The final decision for the road is not a city decision. This is a school decision. This is compliance issues with traffic that we need to, that they need to, that we need to. But the location of the road itself is not a city decision.
That's right.
So I just want to be perfectly clear about that in case anyone else gets involved.
And I would just note also that the city is in for the traffic study, splitting it with the school, half of twenty-one thousand. Right.
Twenty-one thousand.
Uh, the, the thing is though, what, how do they, Dan, maybe you can, you talk about, how do we, how does MSA know where to do that traffic study? If we're not sure where the road is.
Yeah, do it, tell the study, yeah.
They'll sign on their own.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so Was the MSA providing other information on too, not just the road, this, not just the
Right.
Right?
They're gonna look at the size of the culvert.
Right. But we still, we don't know where that culvert's gonna go. So if you would maybe relay that to them, so that, just so that they're on the same page. Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Number six, consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that we might remove and discuss separately? If not, I need a motion to approve. Motion to approve, full roll. Full roll.
Second, yes, right?
Yes.
Third?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, number seven, we have none. Number eight, I have no comment. Number nine, council comments. Number ten, any public comments for items on the agenda?
Hey, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Like, I'm here, sorry. It's better when you're still here.
Yeah.
Um, then look along by mild ride. Uh, I would like to discuss by mild ride specifically, amount of traffic and, uh, I think there were that a study had done about five years ago on the traffic flow out there. At that point, they got a hundred and thirty cars a day going past my house. Five years ago, there was even less traffic out there. Now it's just nonstop. Because of the study, I believe, improvements were done to the base of the road and also to the ditches. Uh, they got dug out, some of the creeks got taken down. Road was better for a while. At this point, the road is being graded frequently, um, with white rock. And the frequent grading dust is almost nonstop out there. So the dust is becoming a health issue. Uh, it's becoming almost impossible to stand outside, let alone enjoy my yard. Um, we do have quite a windbreak, but it's just not stopping the dust whatsoever. Um, I know it's been brought up previously to council about the possibility of dating, and now is probably not the time when you guys are talking about spending money on other projects. But I would like to know if there's an option to do anything with a hard surface out there. Um, if not a hard surface, I would like to request that some sort of dust control be done. Um, if that for some reason can't be budgeted, um, then I would be willing to pay for the dust control as long as the road wouldn't get graded to minimize what I pay for.
They are. Um, if you recall, a handful of years ago, they came to council and complained about the condition of the road. The condition of the road was bad because the road ground, we got that six rocks and a lot of sand. We wanted the white rock, which is a lot better material. So it is a great road, and it is, it handles all the crap as well. We pretty much, you guys gave me to direct it to approve the road idea. The, the dust control, if you puts it down, then we cannot maintain. And then it turns into a washboard or has puddles, something like that, we can't make, because we maintain it, the counseling is waiting. I can't, I can't afford to do that way on the road. And plus it would be unsafe if we did not maintain the road. If it turns into a washboard situation. And that's what else can happen. If they drive out continually, the white line's going to go away and it's going to be really, it's going to turn into a wash. Well, that's why we can't pull the rock back up enough. We've got a good mound there. Same thing as water, so we've got a good mound with water. That's what we did. Took a few years to do it, but it's actually in very good shape.
But if we had a third option too, didn't we, Dan? About closing it off. If, if that's an option, I'd be happy to look at that. Um, I'm not going for school on the roads. But.
Well, that's why I asked, because your neighbors didn't agree to that. So has anything changed?
It didn't at the time, but I essentially have all the neighbors out there now.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, that might be something that could be discussed. And I would not be opposed to working, I think that would minimize any wash guarding, it would minimize dust. Right now, it is essentially the shortcut to get to all our repairway. Instead of the highway, I don't understand why anybody would want to go down gravel road, but if you want to come out and visit on, on such areas out there where you want to goodbye. You know, one other thing to thought about is speed, but it really doesn't do much. Nobody's going to control the speed, even whatever size you want. Even to the fact of putting up some sort of, of ski bumps to slow people down.
How often are we allowed to eat in that road?
Ten days.
They're out there about every week, regardless of any danger does need it. That seems extraordinary. Unraveling frankly.
Is there a possibility of setting a longer timeline on that?
I've been told it's part of a route, so they do it regardless.
Well, try to keep them safe. And so, and it's unfortunate that, that's get the dust, that's part of the non-gravel road, that's part of the, the, or white purchases there. But it's a road that you guys want me to get safe and better conditions, and that's what we do.
Oh, I need definite proof.
And I'm not disagreeing with that, they are. I'm disagreeing is white rock has made it dustier than gravel. And you don't seem to want to listen to me. That's not fair, Ben.
It is.
No, it's not. I'm sorry, because you came to us with the drainage issues, which we fixed. We came and improved the rock surface, which we did.
Yes.
And that's created another problem, but when you come to us with the issues, they haven't fixed. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm asking for some sort of assistance with the dust.
I'll send you to J R. Tell me to council. Talk about some, we'll, we'll talk about some, I'll visit with you. And then somebody will report back to you, like you know what you came up with. Will that work?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments for items on the agenda?